We are One Forest Hills Public Schools. This is the palpable sentiment most of us hope to protect and maintain in this community that is broadly known as the Destination School District. The desire to remain laser focused on preserving the factors that earned Forest Hills that reputation, which draws lots of donor dollars and sets students up for productive and fulfilling futures, is what inspired tonight's school board candidate forum. This event is sponsored by Support of HPS, a group of 100% volunteer current district parents who want to get back to the feeling of One Forest Hills Public Schools. We advocate for the support, safety, and success of all students. We launched a year ago to help Forest Hills defend against ongoing disruption. We're 100% funded by the local community and have a supporter wall of hundreds of families on our website. As a result of our work, we've been invited to join the National Network for Public Education, the Michigan Education Justice Coalition, and the Students' Right Coalition for our commitment to protecting public education. Tonight, we're gathering the community and the school board candidates to re-ground ourselves in what is giving voters plenty of choice on the ballot this fall election. School board elections don't often draw much attention. It's traditionally a matter of voting in who you know or skipping that section of the ballot altogether. But the national attention and conversation on school boards underscores that this is now one of the most important offices on our ballot. There are no primary elections for school board races in Michigan. That means we have an overcrowded field of 13 candidates running for four seats on our seven-seat board. This puts the onus on voters to primary candidates on their own time, which is another reason why we brought this forum to life. Absentee ballots hit mailboxes in a week or so. Election day is November 8th. We hope you'll vote informed. A bit more about the school board. Forest Hills Public Schools has a seven-member school board. Four of those seats are on the ballot, including three six-year terms and one special two-year term to finish out a vacated position. It's important to reflect on the skills and outgoing expertise of Nippon-Lowish Gregory, who's not seeking reelection. On the table are roles like treasurer and chair of the district's finance committee. We've all held an MBA and a deep understanding of the district's budget and finances. Other existing board members on the ballot are known for their diligent service, establishing innovative district programs, donating to the foundation, coaching sports teams, and being active Forest Hills parents. Today, we'll hear from a broad mix of new and incumbent candidates about why they feel they are the right choice for the Board of Education and how their expertise suits the board. We'll hear from 10 candidates running for three six-year seats and three candidates running for the two-year term. About the format. The public has three ways to watch here in person, live on the Support of HPS Facebook page livestream right now, and as a recorded version on our YouTube page and later on our website. This is a forum for the 13 participants to introduce themselves and share responses to four questions. This is not what we would consider a debate or a public town hall meeting. Because of the vast number of candidates, we do not have time for public Q and A. But the public has many ways to reach out to each of these candidates directly on their websites or email addresses or even after this event. The forum has four parts. Everyone will begin with a two-minute introduction, will shift into four questions of each candidate, each with one minute, and if time permits, a lightning round of yes, no questions. And everyone will have 30 seconds to give closing remarks. We have a timekeeper, raise your hand, timekeeper in the back. Two timekeepers with color-coded papers to indicate remaining time, stop times. You'll probably hear them say "time" at the end, and they do have some cues with the time left. We've reiterated some rules that we hope everyone will follow, including respecting the moderator and the timekeepers, not interrupting, not pecking, or disrupting anyone of any kind, and encouraging those watching online to keep their online comments respectful. And if these are not met, we'll have to ask you to leave. Now, I'm gonna digress for a moment and say that we do have one remaining seat left up at the table. There is a sign that we asked everybody to, formally asked everybody to sign, that said that we need secure your approval to record you because this is a live recording. That option is on the table literally and has been there since day one. All of these candidates have agreed to sign that form in full. This was not a no, this was a yes if you sign the form. So if that candidate is anywhere in this room and would like to participate, this is a final call for them, otherwise, we accept that choice. Now, I'd like to introduce our moderator. In the spirit of objectivity, Support of HPS is thrilled to have found a fantastic moderator for this forum with whom we do not have an existing relationship. We are beyond pleased to introduce Dr. Molly Patterson, Department Chair and Associate Professor of Political Science at Aquinas College. She is also the Director of First Year Experience. Please help me welcome Dr. Patterson.
Thank you very much to Becky and Support of HPS for their excellent work setting up this campus date forum and for inviting me to moderate. I am here, as Becky said, as an impartial party. I do not reside in the Forest Hills School District. I do not know the candidates, and I have no relationship with Support of HPS prior to this moment. As a political scientist, however, I appreciate the effort that is being invested to provide voters with meaningful information. Governance is about much more than issue positions. It is the often tedious, painstaking work of collaborating with other people who have different views, sometimes very different views, to make informed decisions in a complex information environment. It is about effectively stewarding this public institution and the public resources that support it on behalf of the larger, also complex, community. I applaud everyone watching and in attendance for taking these elections seriously. It is democracy at its best. We will be starting with introductions, as Becky said, and we will proceed in alphabetical order for introductions and first question, starting first with the candidates for the six-year terms and then candidates for the two-year term. The questions will be drawn in random order, and after the first question, we will change the order of responses so no one person is always stuck answering first or last. So with that, we'll move on to introductions and... I'll start down here. Hey, timer? We can.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Suzanne Callahan. Actually, a little bit I know so that. I am the proud president of Forest Hills Public Schools Board of Education. A little bit about me and why I'm running. I am running for two reasons. One, it's important and it's exciting. I think that K-12 education is the key to the future of our workforce. Employers think this is important, and this is very much what I do in my day job every day, work with employers and talk about future talent needs. So I think this work goes along with my experience that I have on a daily basis, and it's exciting. I love school. I love going when I have my lot of Wednesdays. I love all the things that are happening in this school. So I'm energized by everything that's happening in Forest Hills. It's good, and I want to be involved with it. Personally, I have three children that have gone through the Spanish worship program, and they are a proud family.
I'm Hallie DeBoer. I have lived in Forest Hills community for 26 years now. We actually moved here because of Orchard View Elementary. We heard so many good things about it, and so we came in here. And since day one, in Orchard View, it was like family with the staff. And we got our feet wet right away coming in, stuff, getting involved with our sporting events with our kids, volunteering in the classrooms. We were chaptering trips. Many of you remember Mackinac trips and stuff, and working as COPTO presidents. My husband and I worked as COPTO presidents. And I coached for the district for probably 12 years, 10 years, as a Forest Hills middle school soccer coach with a co-friend, Henry, and developing their program and stuff. And we actually started doing that because they didn't have a program, and she said they wanted to do it, we said sure, and so we jumped in. We also, I also coached varsity cheer at Forest Hill Central and did that for a few seasons, and then also I worked in the district. I was an inclusion aide. I worked as special needs kids. I was an overload aide and also recess and lunchroom, which became kind of my classroom and the students that I worked with there. And I also taught in community services. I found some areas that was kind of fun and just really exciting for me. So throughout my life, I've had leadership roles, whether through my church mentoring kids, through Lifeline Ministries at Ada Bible, through the businesses that I've owned. I travel abroad through humanitarian aid. Where's my timing? Okay. For in the desert work in refugee camps for countries that were torn by acts of war. I'm just gonna let you know, I'm running to represent you and put our children first at Forest Hills Public Schools. I will always stand up for our community and the family values and practice. Uh-oh, stop. Okay, never mind.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kevin Donovan. Kevin Donovan, proud father of four at Eastern, Go Hocks. I've got two that graduated from there. I'm proud dad of one here. I've got one way over in New Orleans. I've got a second one that just started at GBSU, just west of here. And I've got a senior or junior and a freshman in high school currently. I'm a graduate of Texas State University. I have a degree in construction science. I've spent the last 24 years building projects, some of the largest buildings around the world. I've had the privilege of working on jobs as large as $2 billion, and currently work for Barton Mallow. We are the largest general contractor in the state of Michigan. Why am I running for the school board? Well, one thing, as you can tell by the broad breadth of candidates up here, this is a very important race. I think we're all up here for very different reasons. And we're all good here since the, we're all here because we're passionate. I hope they're all passionate about kids. I'm passionate about kids. I'm passionate about my kids. I want to be passionate about your kids as well. I know my kids have had some very big highs and lows in the Forest Hills District. They've been here since 2014, but there's been some low moments too. And during some of those low moments, I have a parent that had to reach out to whether it's the principal or athletic director or the school board itself, busing, transportation department. And I'll be honest, I have not had great experience working with the district in those capacities. It's not been enjoyable. And it's those reasons, and for me personally, the drive of my passion to want to improve our district. We're a great district, and we don't want that to happen, the stories like mine to become a resonant theme around the district. So at the end of the day, I am here to run. I'm here to go and represent my kids, but your kids, and I hope that I can bring what I was maybe a successful professional to the table to help advancing our school district. Thank you.
I have notes so that I don't ramble on too much. Hello, my name is Jessica Johnson. I first want to thank Support of HPS for hosting this forum and for giving me the opportunity to join. I want to thank the community for following both here personally and online. My background is in education itself, where I spent six years teaching in schools across Indiana before I set the way to raise my own three children. With a strong passion for educational excellence, I co-founded a nonprofit called The Storehouse, in which I'm currently also the executive director. The Storehouse works with businesses across the United States to secure brand-new product donations that we then redistribute locally, benefiting both nonprofits and schools. It is because of this work that I feel I will make a great addition to the Forest Hills School Board. I not only manage a business focused on securing needed resources for schools, but have grown it since inception in 2016, from securing $100,000 in school supplies to several million dollars in donations impacting students across West Michigan. I'm running for the Forest Hills School Board because I believe in a shared vision of academic excellence for all students, promoting a transparent process of accountability and creating collaboration among stakeholders. I am passionate about working with our community and administrative administration to improve student achievement, decide goals for academic success for all students, to build positive relationships between staff, students, and parents, and to make sure that we as a district are successfully following a strategic vision that improves the academic outcomes for all students. Personally, I have three boys that are also through Eastern. One's a sophomore in college at Taylor University in Indiana. I have a junior in high school at Eastern and then an eighth-grade son who's actually playing football right now. Married for 25 years. My husband moved to Grand Rapids about 18 years ago and love the community of Forest
Thanks. My name is CJ Michaud. I was appointed to the board about six months ago. I am a lifelong resident of Forest Hills. I received my entire K-12 education here, as did my four siblings. Very proud of that. I went from here to Grand Valley, on to receive a doctorate pharmacy from Ferris State University, couple of years of residency, and ultimately became the cardiothoracic intensive care clinical pharmacist at Spectrum Health. I am objective, I'm data-driven, and I'm totally nonpartisan in my approach to the board. The only things that I subscribe to walking in the boardroom are being pro-public education and being pro-kids. And it's kids that got me into this. I have four kids of my own, who, my oldest is a second grader. My youngest will graduate from Forest Hills in 17 years. So I have a very personal stake in the present and the future education that the Forest Hills is putting out. I joined the board because I would stack my K-12 education here up against anyone in the state, and I hope that every senior who graduates from here can say the same thing. Ultimately, I joined the board to try and help be a bridge between community and district. We checked our calendar before this. I've had at least one meeting with a community member, a teacher, administrator, every single week for the last four months. It was a busy summer, and I loved it, and I will continue to invest myself in this district, invest myself in our kids. I fully believe in open, respectful conversation, and that everybody deserves to be treated with dignity. And I really just look to give my energy and my passions so that everybody who leaves Forest Hills will forever say the same thing that I do, and that is that there's no better place in Michigan to receive an education. So I'm happy to be here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you to Support of HPS for putting this event on. I am a businessperson and a lifelong learner. I am a former business executive with large global companies. I currently own a small business, two pre-martial arts schools in Grand Rapids, and they have been a joy to, as we watch the students advance and develop from the schools. I started teaching business at Old College in 2020, a couple of months before the pandemic. That was a learning experience. And I have my MBA from Northwestern's Calhoun Graduate School of Management. I served on the board of an education nonprofit, and I served there for six years with three years as board president. Early Learning Neighborhood Collaborative is a nonprofit that helps kids get preschool from vulnerable neighborhoods. And my responsibilities on that board were similar to the types of responsibilities that I would have on this board. I'm running as an independent candidate, and I'm running for this board position because I've seen how education can change a life. And I have a passion for education and a passion for Forest Hills kids. I want to give back. I have three sons who went through Forest Hills Central. They graduated in 2017 and 2019. Our family is so, so grateful for the many caring and skilled and amazing teachers and staff members and coaches, and so to be able to serve the school and the community in this way would be a privilege. I'm very skilled at working in diverse teams, which is a skill that we really need today. And I have the ability to bring people together and to help find a shared perspective. I want to bring these skills to bear to support Forest Hills families and communities. Thank you.
Thank you to Support of HPS for putting this on, and to Dr. Patterson for being our moderator today. Hi, everyone. I am Mallory Nymer. I'm a mother to two young children in our district. I'm a manager in financial reporting at Spectrum Health. I'm the treasurer on the Cornapple Elementary PTO and wife to the district manager of the Ada Bean and Gold Library in Ada. To be completely honest, I've never had any political aspirations in my life. My, being involved in my community is my end goal, and I'm an advocate for strengthening our public schools. This school district is my home. These students are my kids, and these teachers are my friends. This community means everything to me, and I truly care about its success. I will be a voice for collaboration. I'm a manager of the team at Spectrum Health, and in that role, I consistently embrace working as a team to accomplish complicated goals. Serving our community on the board means that I will work together with others on the board, our educators, and the school administration to provide support to all of our students so they can continue to have academic success. I will be able to use my skills as a CPA and find a financial reporting manager to analyze and help explain budget and expenditure. Vote Come and Good, local nonpartisan organizations endorse me because I embody the commitments to serve with dignity, mutuality, humility, civility, and democracy. My two sons will be in the Forest Hills classes of 2033 and 2036, so I have a long-term invested interest in this district's future. This is an amazing school district, and as a board member, I will help it remain strong.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Support of HPS for hosting this candidate board, and I'd like to thank the audience for watching, and I am here in person. My name is Justin Shelton. I'm faculty at Grand Valley State University, where I teach classes in history as well as multicultural diversity in the United States. I'm a member of the GBSU LGBTQ alumni advisory board. My endorsements thus far are retired teacher, former Michigan Board of Education member, and Forest Hills resident Lupe Ramos Matikne, as well as Kent County family judge, athlete, and vote Come and Good, West Michigan. I'm also in the process of seeking the endorsements of the Michigan Educators Association, the United Auto Workers, as well as the West Michigan Building Trades Council, all of whom endorse me in the form of a. I'm running because I believe in public education. I am a product of public education, educated myself. I will do everything in my power to defend the integrity of education from forces that want to dismantle it. As a historian, I'm trained to remain neutral and objective when researching emotional and controversial subjects and rendering unbiased reports. I design my class to achieve issues heavily discussion-based. I do this because I want to hear my students' opinions and their experiences, and therefore on the board, I will listen, learn the viewpoints of parents, staff, and the community. I strongly believe in accountability. The school board represents the interests of the parents, students, staff, and the community at large, and as well as hold the superintendent and administration accountable for their actions. And just as the superintendent and the administration is accountable to us, the school board is accountable to you, the people who elected us to this position of office. I will use my experience as an educator to encourage and support curriculum development like we do at GBSU to ensure our students are in the 21st century cutting-edge education.
My name is Brian Esbrete. I graduated from Central Michigan with a degree in mathematics and computer science. It's been the last 20 years at Dematic doing software development. I feel I'd be a good fit for the school board because I have three children currently in the district across three different buildings, bringing the perspective of the parent that's in the district every day. I get the emails from the superintendent, the principals of the transportation department, I'm an ambassador, and in for gatherings, sporting events, talk to friends at picnics, you know. In short, I'm engaged in this district nearly every day. I'm running because I love living in Forest Hills, and I'm proud of my family being a part of the district, an amazing student system. I want to be part of shifting focus back on collaboration and continuing to support an already amazing district, and I want, and I'm someone who wants to listen to everyone, keep growing that success of the district.
I want to thank Support of HPS and Dr. Patterson for organizing all this. My name is Ed Bouffadel. My wife Kathy and I were the new Forest Hills Central. Our son Zachary was a graduate of Forest Hills Central in 2017. He then went on to Grand Valley State to study math and statistics, and I worked at Grand Valley. I'm a mathematics professor and administrator at the university there. I'm a product of public education. Our K-12 education was in Illinois and Indiana, went to Michigan State as undergraduate, and then Rutgers University, New Jersey, as a graduate student. Since then, I've taught at universities, went to Connecticut, and then went in two decades at Grand Valley. I embrace the philosophy of public education is for all. Education aligns people with the skills and knowledge to succeed with. I'm enthusiastic about seeing teachers and students work hard in the board, and administration can help by providing resources, clear policies, fantastic facilities, and moral support. I've had positive experiences in school as a student, professor, administrator, and I want the same for others. As far as skills that I bring to the board, I bring, I'm very detail-oriented, have strong written moral communication skills, listening skills, and creative policy. I can also provide a fresh approach to district issues. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Robert Ribs. Excuse my voice, please. I got a little versed in it. I'm running for school board for several reasons. One of the biggest reasons is the school board district has been kind of dropping in a way of overall academics. There's no reason why Forest Hills should not be the top five school district in the state, so if I'm elected, it is exactly what I would be doing. My background is, I'm a basketball coach for Central for both boys and girls. I'm also a coach for JV girls at a private school in Wyoming. I'm also a member of SPORE. It's a group that's sponsored by the SBA, that we actually mentor small businesses to help them grow from either conception all the way to a company that wants to get to the next level. So I work in that aspect. Also, I have been a member of the YNCA as a referee for middle school girls and boys. And I'm also a former scout master for over eight years, which I can still be active because I have had my training. Outside of that, I don't believe there's anybody here that wants to ruin Forest Hills. The whole idea is to make the school district better. When I got involved, I got involved a year ago, excuse me, October, seeing all the problems that were going on between several sides, the family, friends, and I thought it was totally unacceptable. So I got totally involved. I have been to every afternoon meeting on both business and curriculum since December. I've also been to every board meeting, so I understand what goes on. I also knew about the transportation problem within the school, which I got very much involved with that, to the point that I did write a letter to the president of the school board and to the superintendent with my ideas of how to fix the problem. I think some of my ideas have been used. So from that point, I'm here to actually help Forest Hills grow to become a better school district.
From picnics to follow wonderful community, right. I married long. I became Forest Hills resident in 1991 when I married and moved here. Kathy received my engineering degree from the University of Illinois and MBA from the University of Michigan. At the time, I was a senior sales manager at a Fortune 500 refrigeration company, glamorous job, who did nothing westernish, like much growth potential. I disagreed because I hung out here in my job and convinced that through listening to customers, through trading, and through gathering data to transition me to be an employee to an owner of that sales department in West Michigan. Those are the kinds of skills that have served me really well as a board member, the listening, watching trends, and the data gathering. Some more online, we ended up with four kids over four, three, four years, which was wild, and they waited nine different schools, which is crazy, through the Eastern development and at least in the police. What if we'll get as a board member to be all over the district, call three attendance areas, being people who understand the different cultures and the needs for us to all be amazing and magic that happens in Forest Hills? So much so, I was buck-bitten, jumped into the board race, I'm opposed, and was elected in 2004, served under two superintendents, four board presidents, and was part of the superintendent selection process in 2006. So why am I running now? I've been on for 18 years, evidently. That is a long time. I love the idea of fresh faces. I think change is critical. I want the board my whole time to keep transitioning through different exit roles, through different committee assignments, and keeping the magic different task force opportunities. Guess what? We have fresh faces. There is a ton of change on this board. On January 1st, we could have a five-person board that has eight years of experience. Four of them have two years of less, maybe more, depending on the county election bills. So why are you happy to stick around for two more years, take that leadership, take that experience, and help this group with some critical concepts of governance and accountability to help the superintendent do his job, make sure the vision is executed correctly, and to Forest Hills come excellent? Thanks. Can I ask that when you're speaking that you hold it closer because our live stream has been the entire time here? I'm so sorry about this.
Thank you for the introductions. Our first question is, to what degree are students in this district on track for post-secondary readiness? And how do you know it will do the same work? And how do you know it will do the same work? All right, well, the first thing that we could look at is a statistic or a metric, so we'll do that first. And there would be one that we would point out, we were just talking about this at our board meeting on Monday, that 96% of our, we have a 96% graduation rate, approximately 83%, as Maggie was reporting. 83% of our students are in post-secondary education, a six-year, a college degree type of program, within six months of graduation, and that exceeds the average of approximately 60% in Kent County. So if post-secondary education going to college is the plan, we're achieving on that metric. I'll stop with metrics right there and say that's just one example. We could go on into the classes that our students are taking and upright other metrics. But how do we know they're ready for post-secondary? I think that, oh, I was going to say 10 seconds, I swear. That's okay. I would say, this is actually a great question that we're working on now. Oh, I don't realize. Oh, okay, well, there you go. Forest Hills is well-known for high school graduates applying to colleges and colleges reviewing the applications, loving our district name on it. They know that what kind of students are going to get and how they're prepared for their next journey. I want to ask, though, what are students who do not wish to continue education outside their high school experience? And how we do measure success in our students, whether they go to school, to college or not? What if they drop out of college? What if they take a gap year? If they go straight to the workforce, maybe they decide to own their own business without the higher education? So I guess my question would be is are we preparing our students to be competitively employed without higher education? Having a high level of independence with life skills, critical thinking skills, entering into the trades well-prepared and entering into colleges well-prepared? And there's always a lot of pressure amongst students when they go to the graduation parties. And they're always asking, so where are you going to college? So having the skills that allow our students to begin their journey beyond high school by being ready to participate effectively and to be successful, no matter which they choose on this journey.
I've got 60 seconds. Is it like a race, set, go kind of thing?
Yeah.
So what is post-secondary readiness? I think that's a remarkable question. First and foremost, we as a district and as a community have to define what that is. And it doesn't just, it's not just about the students that are going to college. What about the ones that aren't going to college, that aren't college-bound? Or maybe college-bound prior to 10 years? What about those students? So firstly, I don't believe that, well, GPAs and SAT scores and good grades, they're all a great metric to use. I don't think they're the defining factor. What I believe is the defining metric is where are our students in five years, 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years? What is the long-term range of the students that are graduating from Forest Hills Public Schools? Are they graduating with degrees, entering the trades, becoming business owners? What are our students doing in the long run becomes the true defining metric of what we've done as parents, leaders, educators, and in the form of education. That's a way to educate ourselves.
A sign that I use at my company right now is greatschools.org. So I use that as a reference. Eastern, Northern, and Central High Schools all write 10 out of 10 on college readiness. The criteria used for tracking this is graduation rates, entrance, college entrance exams, percentage of students in advanced coursework, and other standardized testing information. I believe that academic preparedness is only one indicator of a student's readiness, however. I believe that academic tenacity that I actually saw lacking in my own son during COVID when the push to continue to that same level was lacking when it became his own job to do so. And I think that's something that we need to work on. I think a third critical factor that has been alluded to is the college knowledge, which is encompassing the critical thinking, the problem-solving, all of the different issues that are more soft skills that we really need to work on. And so I think figuring out and encompassing all of those as a whole picture for a child so that we know that not all of them are going to be going to college, but how do we look beyond that to see if they're successful?
Well, I personally agree with the district's emphasis on college and non-college routes. I've seen it firsthand. Our high schoolers get a lot of exposure to careers on both tracks. But it is a fact that Suzanne mentioned 83% of our graduating seniors in the last four years have gone on to college in the fall, and that exceeds the county level and the state metric of 53%. The thing that concerns me is of those 83% that we send to college, 21% of them do not complete their freshman year. They don't earn 24 credits in 12 months. And that's exactly in line with the state average of 20%, 25%. So what are we missing? What are they finding outside of Forest Hills that they are not? Maybe they changed their mind, of course, but is there something we can be doing? I don't think it's academics, our SATs, our college readiness. We completed over 2,300 AP courses in the district last year. So I don't think it's that, but I'm trying to figure out what we can do better at the high school level so that kids know if they want to choose college or not college. And for those who do choose college, they are better prepared to be successful when they get there.
So so many students are so well-prepared to go the college track. And obviously, all students are not going to go that track. We've got students that are going to go instead of a four-year track, they're going to go two years, they're going to go to a trade school. And so we need to prepare all of those students, and we need to make sure that there's really, really high expectations for all of those students. So things that would be important would be assessments, as people have talked about, state assessments, AP exams, things like that. But there's a lot of skills that in, when I teach in college, I see students are struggling with. Things like critical thinking and communication and creativity. And so we need to make sure that we balance those learning fundamentals, the reading, writing, math, science, history, with those 21st century skills that are going to round out the students and prepare them for the future.
Thank you. As a parent, there is a great website, mi-schooldata.org, and they have a parent dashboard on there that you can go and see how your kids' schools are doing. And as everybody stated already, all three of our high schools perform better than the average and better than our peer schools in standardized testing, graduation rates, attendance, and post-secondary enrollment. And post-secondary enrollment includes two-year colleges, trade schools, and certification programs, which they said 83% of graduating seniors go on to these programs. But I agree, I've talked with West Michigan Trade and Construction Association about, do our kids know that there are other reps they can go? While they are in school, are there opportunities to do internships and learn about these other reps other than college? College is expensive. So do we want to just send your child to college not knowing what they really want to do? So having those opportunities while still in school. And I also understand that COVID are high. Okay, thank you.
Yes, as of right now, the district is doing a good job at preparing students for college or vocational schools. As mentioned before, 83% of Forest Hills grads do end up going to college. I usually have a handful of that in my various classes every semester. And they usually end up near the top of the class by the end of that semester. As a board member, I would continue to add more AP classes, and I would prioritize working with neighboring colleges, universities, vocational schools, and labor unions to bolster that 83% number. I'm already in talks with local labor about how the district can work with them about apprenticeships and new and innovative ways to increase the number of skilled trade opportunities here in Forest Hills area. Work also could be done to prepare our students for pathways that lead to high-paying 21st century career paths that do not involve a college degree, rather are certificate-based. Think copywriters, web designers, and video game developers.
All right, it's hard to be near the end. All the stats are out there. I'm a math guy. So, you know, I'll focus on CJ's 21%. What are the 21% of kids that are going to college and leaving with debt and no degree? You know, we know our kids are getting prepared for college. The test scores are great, everything's like that. But how are we making sure with the vocational classes, you know, with the ISD, what are we offering them? For that 21% that have pushed to go to college because everybody else is doing it or if that's what we're supposed to do, but weren't really ready for, or that wasn't what they're going to do? So, you know, the focus is more on that for me than post-secondary. We're doing a great job post-secondary.
Another math guy here. So now I mentioned mi-schooldata.org, and there's something in my homework that I want to report on this. And that is there's standardized tests for evidence-based reading and writing and mathematics. So for reading and writing, the statewide average of being proficient is 52%. Here in the district, it's 80%. For mathematics, the, those rated proficiencies in mathematics is 30% statewide. Here in the district, it's 60%. I think these are good numbers, because we are a premier district here in West Michigan, but there's still work to do. Now, what can we, what kind of work can we do toward one purpose? So the purpose of the board, their one purpose is to think strategically. And something I said to the board on Monday at the board meeting is that there is a plan to establish Grand Rapids as a tech hub like Nashville and Salt Lake City, and predicting 20,000 jobs in all sorts of areas, not just coding. And I'm out of time.
The question is two parts. You've got education, which is academics, and you've got the trade. The big question I have is, Ed just brought up, high-tech is coming to Grand Rapids. If we're doing so well, if you look at the data, in science, 30% are not proficient in science. To me, that's important to understand that we got to raise our standards. The other concern is when you talk about education itself. You look at the overall work of the district, how we look at figures of what's going on within the district. However, Michigan, as you know, is the 47th state in education. We've got to really improve what Forest Hills is doing. The biggest fear that I have is that they do go into the voucher system or any of that. I don't want people to leave Forest Hills. I want them to stay here because we're going to have the most diverse, the most inclusive, the best programs. There could be no reason for anybody to leave this district.
Am I good now? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Again, I have to turn on the table. And we recognize Forest Hills is definitely a college-bound district. There are trends in the world, there are trends in our district through some of the differentiated learning opportunities to make post-secondary look a little different. The district has hosted since before my time the Business Advisory Council. We heard loud and clear their last meeting. Our kids are economically prepared. They know their stuff. But you know what? They definitely need some 21st century skills. When they get to the workplace, they may not thrive with respect to communication, collaboration, creative problem-solving, all these really critical skills in this day and age. So thanks to so many differentiated learning opportunities that continue to grow, if you go on board, a lot of programs available at Northern, that is what's helping our kids up their own ambition, really go out there and not get out of the park. College-wise, yep, ISD's too. I don't think they're entirely the same, but you know, SAT college and career rate is 84% relative to 50% of the state, though. As far as college persistence, 24 credits over a 12-month period, we're at 80%. The ISD is at 43%. Anecdotally, our kids can often say, I look better about what I can do in the college classroom than most of my peers. So I think you're right.
I apologize for not reminding everybody that the questions for this portion of the question is one-minute responses. So you're doing great. The next question is, how will you build consensus and support in the community around the work of the school district? I think we're doing these in the first order.
I'll go up the alphabet and bring it back around. So maybe I'll have a runner, bring it back.
All right, to build consensus and support, first and foremost, I will listen. I will talk with students, parents, and district staff. I need to seek out and listen. I don't seek out and listen to just people that agree with me. I want to understand all points of view, and I will listen and look for reasonable solutions to those issues. I plan to learn from these discussions, work with the school board, work with the superintendent, and find the best solutions. The district isn't broken. It's a great district. With us working together, it will continue to grow and evolve, continue to be a top-tier destination in education. I spent the last 10 years involved in the district, been leading scouts, been a coach of the kids' teams, continue to volunteer and support events my kids are involved in. Through these opportunities, I've made lifelong friends. To help me understand the strengths of our district as well as some of its differences, I will continue to be involved in my kids' events, be visible part of the district, and willing to listen and look for ways to help the district.
Yes, I will build consensus by treating everyone equally, regardless of politics or who they supported in this election, and by reminding everyone that we should all be focused on what's best for the student. We will have disagreements, obviously. There'd not be so many of us running for board if we did not have disagreements. It's a normal human occurrence. My classes at GDSU are designed in a seminar structure, which means it's heavily discussion-based. I do this because I realize that I don't have all the answers in life. That as a human race, we continue to learn new things every day. One main mode of learning is through the lived experiences with the people around us. The key for myself as a board member will be to listen, learn, and then talk about our differences in a respectable manner, just as I do in the classroom.
So I will seek to build consensus by listening to diverse views and openly communicating with others on the board and our broader community. We should listen to students and be mindful of all of their needs. We should listen to our teachers who spend so many hours with our children all week. We should listen to parents to find out what the majority sees as important to our children's future. We should listen to my supporter administration, who also want the best for our students. Then when we make collaborative and research-based decisions, we should help our community not just understand the what, but the why behind our thinking, why these decisions will lead back to the success and safety of all of our students, and how we are continuously innovating to make sure our students are prepared for this rapidly changing world. Then after implementation of decisions, use metrics and data to prove success or to go back and continue to raise our new ideas. I believe that administration and board have really increased efforts to communicate to the community. The Staking Security Forum last week, held in our district, was a perfect display of helping the community understand the why and why behind these types of decisions, and I support that.
So I'm going to continue the theme of listening. So listening, really listening, and really seeking to understand. And we so struggle with it today. We see that my students, my students really struggle with it. And so I would focus on that. Another important point is that disagreement has a good. It helps. It brings out different perspectives. It helps us see a problem from various angles. And to allow that disagreement and to acknowledge that, but handle that in a really respectful way, is really, really important. And so I would really want to have some good discussion and good debate and allow those different perspectives to come out. The best way to build support in the community is in engaging the community. The community needs to be heard, needs to be taken seriously, needs to see action and response to their concerns, and needs updates on progress.
Well, I agree with the comments so far, but I would say we can focus on places where we agree, and that is the vast majority compared to the things that we are dividing over in Forest Hills. Every parent in Forest Hills wants their child to be successful. Every parent wants their child to live a productive life after high school. Every person here probably agrees Forest Hills plays a big role in that effort. Now, there are definitely areas of opportunity, you know, where we can be on the same page a little more. Communication is a big one. That's a big one for me, a personal one. I could talk about that for an hour, but I only have 30 seconds. So I would also suggest that we would do well to return to a state of good faith and trust in the community around us and the people in our schools. I am endorsed by Vote Coming Good, West Michigan, who, again, just serves for the basic principles of dignity and respect, civility, humility. And I just think if we all commit to those things, we can set a better example for our kids who are watching, who are seeing this discourse around us and around them. And then we can build a stronger foundation by standing together with what we all agree on, which is our kids.
I believe that the key to building consensus is to understand who the stakeholders are and what the issues are that need to be resolved. Create, be clear on what needs to be decided on, and involve everyone in the process. We need to be intentional to create open lines of communication where issues can be brought up and talked about in a manner that promotes healthy conversations. In order to do that, we need to have open and transparent communication at which each group feels that their voices are heard and responded to in a way that all understand. From a fun teacher side of things, I also think that one of the things that I'd like to see is just even collaboration amongst the different districts. So I think we created Hawk Rally and Husky Rally. I think it'd be really awesome to do a rally amongst all three of the schools and do some different sport events and things like that. So that's what I'm saying.
The board of education has a very good task of being entrusted with educating children in Forest Hills. That's a monumental task to be very good. To think that we must be humble about that.
Uh, to think that we must be humble enough with the Board of Education, uh, to understand the administration, the staff, and the Board of Education, we're not going to have all the answers all the time. And we need to understand that the true stakeholders are in fact parents and students. And we need to be humble enough to invite them in and listen to them. And if we make committees with parents, include them. Inclusivity, that's a big word today, it's a massive word. And we need to become more inclusive with parents and everyone involved in our community that cares about the success of our district, our children, and Forest Hills. Thank you.
I would like to identify the people who would be affected by the decisions involved in the process. Um, if we're going to build consensus, then we need to recognize all the parties that are involved in the decision. And I think sometimes at schools, that's your teachers, it's your students, it's your taxpayers, it's, um, parent, parents, um, you know, community members and stuff, and the, and valued team members of our school. Spent a lot of time this past year and a half listening to staff, students, and community members on a variety of topics. Um, so, I think we need to allow open discussion without fear of them losing their jobs or being threatened by the opposition. Let the participants voice in their concerns, their proposals, um, and then give them equal time and consideration to, um, multiple sides. It can be useful to list out proposals and concerns, so they have time to settle over the course and in the decision-making process. Thank you. Um, I will pick up on a couple of the themes that were shared before, um, both Valerie and Jessica and Holly also, which I just break down fast enough. The different stakeholders who actually make up community. And I think that all the people that were mentioned before need to be engaged, because what we want is to have people support this. And the process that we have going on right now is the strategic planning process that we've discussed a little bit over the spring and into the summer. And then it is actually engaging stakeholders from all the different groups of teachers, community members, a couple of prior board members. And we need clarity around where we're going with frequent communication pieces that come out. That is, with no information, people don't know what's going on. So, having communication and excellent storytelling and, uh, the examples of the great teaching and learning that are happening. We have to keep the teachers engaged and want them to be here. Um, it's going to create followership and people will be excited. We are going to remain the district of choice, and we have lots of great stories to tell going forward, and people will support that.
This is my great idea.
So consensus isn't always about everybody having the same opinion or reaching the same conclusion. It's about figuring out how to go forward together and doing what's best for kids. The last two years, we either were talking things or are still learning things we don't know about, and take the time, as we all said, to not just listen, but to listen for understanding. And remember the times that something was proposed and nobody had, had heard of before, and to take that time to actually sit and listen, and frequently, if it was an agree to disagree, but knowing that the general population, all stakeholders, understood that we need to do what's best for kids. I also was going to cite the strategic planning, where we are going to try and get together and figure out what's best, and look forward to an opportunity for the community to come together in the hall and weigh in on what has been discussed, and we might figure out how to go forward together. So the idea to get consensus, again, is to listen, to engage those stakeholders, and to make sure that we do what's best for kids going forward. Thank you.
Transparency is what I'm more about. The, I am committed to all the people in Forest Hills all the time. I will always be available to take calls, I will always be available before and after board meetings to discuss any concerns that parents have. That's been one of the things I have noticed most about the last seven, eight months. It seems like you hear all these things that people are concerned about, parents, teachers, taxpayers, and they don't get addressed. I want to make sure that I'm available to talk to you, and if I can bring it to the board, and the board, we work together, we get it done, people will hear from me knowing that, hey, we addressed your problem, we're taking care of it. If I can't get it done, same thing. I will also say, hey, this is what I tried to do for you, and we couldn't get it done, but we'll continue to try to do it. The number one thing is to make sure that we're superintendent and all of us work together to make sure the community comes together and becomes one instead of so-called.
So consensus support comes from having learning stance, comes from listening, as people have been saying. Uh, we have to have the right venues for that. I, I don't think the board meetings, the formal board meetings are the right place for these sort of conversations. Um, so what happens at the board, uh, much of it is passing budgets, celebrating successes. Um, and there's the public comment period, which is primarily filled with criticism. Uh, that is a dialogue, it's, it's one-way communication, and from what I can tell, pretty much everyone's frustrated with it. Both the people who are speaking at the podium and people who are listening to it. Um, there are other venues that work a lot better, our, our PTOs, we have parent advisory groups. These are more helpful because there's, there's an opportunity for conversation. We need to have, find other venues, other ways to have those conversations, so that, um, so people feel like they're heard. And, and as you said, we don't necessarily all have to agree, but we have to kind of agree that we're going in the same direction.
I think we'll, um, I was going to get even more clever and like dance it around a little bit, but I think we'll just do alphabetical and then back again.
Okay, ready? What experience do you have with complicated budgets? When you are given a hundred-page budget or longer for the district, what will be your process to determine if it is a good budget for Forest Hills Public Schools?
Okay, well, personally, I have financial experience through the in-business and management P and L myself. So let's talk specifically about Forest Hills. The way this works is we get the budget, and then Mary and CJ can chime in. We will get the budget and we go through and listen to the people that are actually making the purchases in the district, and they run through the budget with us, pointing out the reasons for how they're laying the budget out, and we ask questions of the people that are the experts. They compare, we compare to the state averages, where our priorities are. Our priorities are always on the human part, we want to make sure the buildings are safe and secure, but are we prioritizing things that are closest to the students? That's always the lens that we're looking at. So as far as how we approach it is, we're looking through the documents and, okay, I'll let Mary finish the rest of that, I don't know how we do it. It's worked out with ten seconds. Um, but aiming for the, the students first, and going through the details and comparing it to historical trends and all the other things that are out there, so that's just.
You don't like this one.
It is irritating. Um, I've worked on a variety of different-sized budgets through my business, um, and creating budgets from scratch. Um, when I was working in the film industry, working, um, I work, uh, with, um, Corbett for fundraising. Um, Spectrum Health is one of them that we do in events, clients for private affairs. So I have a variety of budgets that I have to work through, um, constantly, and changing last-minute decisions and stuff. Um, and I guess I would look at the budget in a similar way that I look at a smaller budget. I guess you have to look at, um, what, uh, what our goals are, what's the academic goals that we're trying to achieve and if we're going for them. If the programs are working or they're not working. Um, are we prioritizing the best use of the team and having the needs met? Um, and I'd also reworked some links to ensure there's an easy way to access it. I, I went on and played around the Forest Hill site, and, um, I can't even get in to look at a budget, or it's, it's kind of a blank.
Uh, this is a great question, I'm really excited that this was one of the ones that was picked. Uh, I was very fortunate, uh, on graduation college, I went to Las Vegas and started building casinos. And, uh, there's no shortage of how big those budgets are when those properties get built. My first job in nineteen ninety-eight was a hundred million dollars, which in that time was a massive amount, right? It was part of the seven-hundred-million-dollar casino called the Aladdin. Um, from there, throughout my career, I've had the privilege of working on jobs like the House of Palatine, the Nation Las Vegas, Westgate Tower, uh, the Parisian, Macau, Daily Days Sands in Singapore. These are billion-dollar projects, billion dollars would it be? And monthly, uh, the perspective, the pay application is anywhere from fifty to a hundred million dollars of construction placed a month, a month, okay? So that's the type of experience I'm bringing to the table when looking at a budget. I know what a lot of zeros look like, I often joke about it with people, I say, write a check, and write out nine, twelve zeros after a one in a check and see if that makes sense. It's a lot of money, and we're a steward of that money, and we should be responsible for that money. It's what I've done throughout my whole career, I've been a steward of other people's money my entire time. And most importantly, we should focus on better, uh, students in the classroom.
As an executive director of a nonprofit, I write grants that are specifically tied to outcomes and have clear and restricted use on funds. Two thousand sixteen, we started with five thousand dollars of startup funds. Six short, eight years later, I now manage millions of dollars in resources that have to be tracked, reported on, and tied to clear outcomes. I report to my own board of directors, myself, and understand the role of my board, of that of the school board, which is to help set standards and goals through strategic planning, determine policies, evaluate performance of the superintendent, oversee the budget, and ultimately to oversee the continued improvement of student achievement. My process for determining whether the budget for Forest Hills is one that I would support is to make sure that all expenditures tie directly back to the goals and objectives set by the board and the district. Allocation of funds should directly support these goals and objectives, but should ultimately tie to increase student achievement. Continuing monitoring and evaluation of the budget through data collection and effectiveness of our resources will help to determine whether these funds are allocated appropriately.
Well, to start, I'm the son of a public schools math teacher, a type A pharmacist, and personal finance nerd. So a hundred-page budget is, is pretty much my ideal evening. Um, I, I've contributed, uh, at the hospital to, to medication budgets, again, they're also the millions of dollars, so the scope that we deal with is not new to me. But I would like to bring it to the schools, and my priorities for our spending are people, our instruction in the classroom, and our safety. And it's important to point out, I'm not a public schools finance expert, um, nor do I think I need to be or any of us need to be. We have Julie Davis and an entire team of, of experts who have lifetimes of experience, um, you know, allocating dollars to public schools and to our public schools. So my job is rather to, to scrutinize that, to evaluate that, ask questions there, to make sure that where we're prioritizing money is in line with our, our broader vision for the district, and that our dollars are going for what our kids most need. So, so I take the budget very seriously here, and it's honestly an aspect of board service that I rather enjoy.
As a business executive, I have, have over fifteen years of experience managing very complex multimillion-dollar budgets. Um, my process for evaluating Forest Hills budget would be the same as I've done for a large part of my career. It starts with a good understanding of history, the current context, um, understanding the established vision, strategy, and priorities. And my conversations with the community over the past months leading up to the election would be a valuable input as well. Upon receiving the proposed budget, I would review it to understand what is in it, and for elements that I'm unfamiliar with, or for things that seem out of alignment with our priorities, I would ask questions. I would discuss the budget with other members of the, the board, superintendent, and other members of the district leadership team. I would raise my own questions and concerns, and I would listen to those of other board members engaging in debate when needed. When, whenever discussing financial issues for an organization, I always bring the same question, if this were my money, is this how I'd spend it?
Okay, this is my softball question. So, analyzing complicated budgets and financials is literally what I do every day for Spectrum Health. My team and I are responsible for the financials of the entire system, not known as AHSH system, but BOMA on the east side. Um, it involves analysis of our actuals for our budget and to prior year. This is an asset that I will bring to the board, the ability to dig in and explain where our funding is going. I've already brought these skills to my community level by serving as a PTO treasurer. To verify that a budget is sustainable, I look to cash flows and to targeted metrics. Do we estimate that we have enough money coming in to provide for the things we need and the things we want for our children to succeed? Does our budget satisfy agreements with their teachers and other unions? Is our budget in line with our mission and vision? Does it support all students? Does it support the retention and attraction of our teachers and other staff members? Will there be enough left over to invest in our facilities and our future? There are many questions to answer, and I look forward to learning from the current board and administration and using my skill set to help.
Yes, uh, I grew up in a single-parent, lower-middle-class home, and was raised by a mother who sacrificed her health, uh, working at the state prison in Jackson, Michigan. She taught my sister and I the valuable lesson of how to manage a household income, or a household budget and to pinch as many pennies as possible. While my mom did provide a good quality of life, uh, compared to many of my childhood friends, we still struggle from paycheck to paycheck. In addition to those life lessons, in twenty-twenty, uh, while I'm running for Kent County Commissioner, I raised and effectively managed contributions of over, of over thirty-three thousand dollars and complied with every campaign finance report required. Granted, uh, these two examples don't exactly compare to a hundred-page report. I learned, but I learned quickly, and I'm not unfamiliar with having to make difficult choices and prioritizing the constrained budgets.
All right, when looking at the budget, I do the same thing I do with most everything, I break it down into smaller pieces, look at it, try to get an understanding. Sure, the first year I might have a highlighter and lots of questions and emails going, okay, what is this? Why are we spending this money here? Uh, but in the end, it's going to break down to, you know, whatever else is in it. What do the students need? Is this something they need? Is this something that's nice to have? You know, really focus on keeping the staff that we have top-tier and focusing on students.
So, at Grand Valley for six years, I was the chair of the math max department, and, um, managed a budget of over, of over three million dollars per year, including salaries. Um, to manage that budget, I had an assistant who generated a lot of reports for me, but for myself, I needed to create my own spreadsheets. I literally took some of these reports and typed the numbers to myself, um, month-to-month, uh, some key numbers. And there's a couple of reasons for this. One was so that I actually felt confident about the budget, that I understood what was going on, so I could answer questions to the dean and so on. And that type, the other thing had to do with accountability. Um, I would sometimes have to stand in front of the faculty of the department and answer questions like, how much money did we spend on technology in the past year? And for me to go, oh, it's in some, a report someplace on my desk, I'm, you know, I wanted to be more confident, to, to actually give the most true answer. And so by having my own spreadsheets, that was the way to do that, and I would do this, these hundred-page budgets.
I have been involved with businesses, I worked for Lazy Boy Corporate, I also worked for Kimmel International, and also had my own hotel furniture business, so I had huge budgets you have to worry about. For example, the Mirage, it was a multimillion-dollar budget, we had to figure out how to make the bottom line work. So we had to go through either way, I didn't make sure that it's all justified before we did any work. For the hotels, same with Lazy Boy, same with, uh, Kimmel. So it's always my goal managing, going deep to see, okay, can we afford this, is it in our budget? Same thing with the schools. Do we need these programs? Does it really help the kids have a better education? Does it really help the kids when it comes to extracurricular? Does it really help the kids to go into a trade? These are the areas you need to go down and really look, have what the budgets have, break them down, eliminate the ones that are not going to be used for academics for these type, uh, aspects of the school, and then also to make sure that it's well, uh, well-spent.
Okay, as far as revenues and expenditures in Forest Hills, we have two mechanisms. Capital projects are fun, you talked about consensus in the community. We have always had great experience, just passed a hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar budget, shooting one-hundred percent with the input of the community to say, how do we do what's best for kids? That covers buildings, that covers classes, that covers technology. The really boring thing, the budget I think we're all talking about, is the operating budget. There is straightforward as can be. It's the science of looking at what happened before, figuring out what adjustments have to be made going forward. Eighty-one percent of our budget is people, that is one-hundred percent dictated by the contract negotiation process. As for the rest of our budget, so straightforward, it's school supplies, it's diesel fuel, it's utilities, it's stuff that you put up, an adjustment on it, and you know probably what it's going to be next year. Revenues, foundation allowance, state dictates what we get, doesn't matter how many taxes we pay. That foundation allowance changes based on student population, that can change. We work with demographers, experts in the industry, to give us a good feel for how that population can change and how that revenue can change. What makes a good budget? Make sure that it supports the vision, all learners achieving individual potential.
So, this is the last of the one-minute answered questions, um, and I believe we're going to reverse the order. Okay. Um, so, against what metrics will you assess district leadership's attainment of key goals? How will you know when a program or decision has been successful?
So success of leadership really depends on who we're assessing and why we're assessing them. For the different areas of leadership, I would take some time to research the key goals. For the different areas of leadership, I would take some time to research the key goals. Seek input on how to assess them by working with current board members as well as board members from other school districts. So I can try to understand what available metrics will be best to evaluate. Knowing that every aspect of leadership includes the management of district employees, I would look for metrics that are setting the staff up for success. An example metric might be that employees are getting the resources they need or that the students feel both physically and emotionally safe. The board will have PSAT and other standardized assessments, but as an engaged active parent, I'd have the direct and somewhat unique opportunity to be in the buildings at the school events, working directly, interacting with the parents, students, and staff.
Yes, there are several ways to measure success, such as graduation, dropout rates, college degrees, and awards given for academic reasons. These numbers only tell part of the story. I would very much rely on in-person conversations with administrators, teachers, staff, parents, and students as to the success of the district and whether or not it's achieving its overall objectives. Additionally, a tactic that quality institutions use to gauge their strengths and weaknesses is a SWOT analysis. If elected, I will push for such a survey that will allow the district to know that it's doing well and what needs to be improved upon. This will also have the happy byproduct of increasing parental engagement. Utilizing the parental advisory council, the student advisory council, or possibly a town hall similar to GRPS are possible additional tools to measure success.
So the board's main role is to hire and oversee the superintendent, not to micromanage him. There are elements that the board and the superintendent agree on at the beginning of the year, which the other students I'm sure will tell you about. And there are quarterly meetings and then the annual review as checkpoints to figure out how the superintendent is doing. Similarly, there are predetermined checkpoints for any programs that are implemented to determine success. For example, let's say math scores are down, and that's one of the things that they want to improve over the year. And they're down because of COVID interruptions. Let's be honest, most parents can't help with their high schoolers' math. So math instruction could be a focus area for the year. Perhaps there's a math program that is implemented for students that have bottom 5% of math scores. Checkpoints include testing the students one month out and then at the quarter end. Each program's success will look a little different, but these checkpoints of data are how we measure success.
The metrics that are used to assess district leadership's progress should be ones that are aligned to the district's vision and goals. As student learning is job one for our schools, metrics that assess learning, such as state assessments, AP exams, and other similar tests, are appropriate. Metrics that measure performance in other important areas might be district spending versus budget, measures to evaluate school safety, and teacher retention. Giving the community visibility to these goals and ongoing updates on how the district is doing against these goals builds the community's confidence and trust in our school district. The best way to know whether a program is successful is determining success metrics upfront, aligning key stakeholders in those metrics, and communicating results. Another way to gauge success is by asking key stakeholders like parents and guardians or teachers for feedback.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the evaluation of the superintendent is largely set forth by the state. He is given multiple goals for the year with metrics to define success, and there are touch bases throughout the year and the evaluation at the end. At the program level, though, I would look to assess from multiple sources and multiple people sources, really, and what's our better long-term progress. So I think combining multiple sources gives a good picture for a pilot program and whether or not it should be expanded.
Ultimately, the metrics to measure leadership is to measure student success. I know that we've all talked about the different metrics around data, testing, scores, you know, college readiness, and all the things that we've already talked about. One of the key things that I think is super important that I've noticed is the culture. You know, seeing that there's kids that leave, even when there's a family of three or four kids, and one kid of the family leaves, he goes to a different school. They didn't feel like they could be successful in the school. To me, that's something to invest time and energy in and find out what it is that even within a family, you know, if one student didn't feel like that they belonged, I think that that's one way to measure our district as a whole. I think another key indicator is talking to parents, you know, and figuring out what it is that, what's going on in our schools, you know? Why is it that, you know, can we retain our staff, you know? One year for one of, I think my son's sixth grade year, all four teachers left the building. I think that that's a key indicator of the culture of the school and determining whether or not the administration is being successful. So I'd like to work on that.
One of the things I've learned throughout my career in the success of a program starts with getting and setting proper goals in any project. So knowing what those goals are and what we're going into is the biggest metric to define success. You can benchmark against them, you can have status points or checks along the way. And then you've got to make sure that you're properly funding programs and that you're having proper recovery periods throughout those checkpoints as well. It's not good to have a checkpoint in on a solution or plan and solve whatever problem may be taking place. And then sadly, we may have programs that just aren't working, and it's time to do a cut behavior for those programs, and we have to make those tough decisions to do that as well. And move on with something that's new and different that hopefully achieves the goals that we're trying to do, which is long-term success.
We're in a public service, not a business. And we're in public service to the community of challenging and stretching young minds with our reading, writing, science, and history. And effective communication with the board, our educators, our support staff, administration, and our taxpayers are vital to the successful development and deployment of performance in our education system. It is our students and the parents and the community members of the school who will ultimately judge how well we have achieved the goals and objectives. And it's when the kids are leaving afterwards and stuff, what they have to reflect back on after that happens. And our educators and our team members, who we value and trust with and expect to achieve performance goals and targets, must clearly understand what success is defined and what the role or position is in achieving that success. So both parents and community, along with our administration, staff, and teachers need to be a part of the development and the deployment of performance measurement systems.
Thank you. Okay, the district leadership is evaluated through a couple things. The first is, there is a leadership evaluation tool that's used for our superintendent, and it aligns with the same evaluation tool that's used for staff throughout the district. At the beginning of the year, as CJ and a couple others mentioned, we align on what are the core focus areas for the superintendent, which would be high-level, district-level, and we focus on that. We're getting updates throughout the year. The final evaluation at the end of the year comes from a lot of what we consider the traditional metrics of the state, the test scores, and all the things that we've discussed this evening. So the ultimate leaders evaluation comes from both of those things. We align on that in the summertime, and we're having touch points throughout. And all the programs that we're talking about, these examples are great examples. We look at throughout the year, see how they're doing, get anecdotal feedback and data feedback throughout the year. The strategic planning process that we're doing right now is going to overlay right on top of this. When the community has weighed in on some of the key priorities, and I'm saying communities, teachers, staff, everybody, those goals and objectives that are short, medium-term, and long-term overlay on top of all that.
Thank you. So how do we know if we reach our goals? We have many metrics in place, qualitative and quantitative. When you look at academic, we have been given so many professional learning opportunities to see how our teachers can utilize formative assessments instead of summer group assessments to make sure as far as teaching and learning, our kids are on track, and in the end, they're asking their contact. As far as the rest of the classroom or the school experience, what about engagement, communication, professional learning, culture? We do a culture and climate survey every year. Those results just came back, and they were incredibly promising. People could really go about what's happening in the schools academically and in the support of academia and everyone that supports the academia. In addition to that qualitative measure, there's some really discussion forums where it's actually interactive discussion about how are we doing? The teacher advisory council, the parents advisory council, student advisory council. I was very excited to be able to start that two years ago. And watching those students have a voice, it is all at very low levels across the three high schools. He's been embraced by our superintendent, and they are working together to make sure that input needs to, what comes next for kids to go out into our world. Thank you.
This is fun. It's good fun to hear. A lot of the things that have been talked about pretty much been covered. It's kind of hard to kind of over that and broom on what has been said. The thing is, the superintendent does run the school. He is the ones in charge. The board controls the money. It's taxpayers' money. They have no word of this career. The teachers should have more say on what programs, what is implemented in school, tried. They think it's a good system, put it in, but just not randomly, excuse me, manually put something into the system that may or may not work. The whole key is to make sure academics is the number one thing we've got to go for. We've got to improve that to get the kids ready. So many kids are not ready for college. Some kids are not ready for trade schools. We've got to make sure that we have the funds to measure how good this system is for the trade schools, for academics, for the teachers, taxpayers, and students.
So there've been some excellent answers here about metrics. So I think I'm going to be a little bit contrary. I'm a mathematician, but for my career, I've worried about the tyranny of numbers. That's where decisions, you know, we want decisions to be data-informed, but we also want to be accountable in those decisions ourselves and not have the data force us to make decisions and say, well, the number is seven, so we have to do this. At the end of the day, you have to be responsible for your decisions. So you have to look at things more than just metrics. You have to look at, there's an idea called face validity, and that's the degree to which a program or a decision appears effective to the community. If you say, hey, it's working, look at these metrics, but no one believes it, that's a problem. What we do also needs to match our values, things like community and fairness. And those things sometimes aren't worth the measure, but they're just as important.
So we are going to have time for a couple of lightning round questions. And these are questions that people tend to feel strongly about. So we're just going to keep it to a simple yes or no answer. And the, maybe we can just pass it down more. The first question is, should LGBTQ students or educators be able to identify as such at school? Yes.
Can you answer that one? Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Not going to answer that one? Yes.
So the second lightning round question was, do you support programs like vouchers, school choice, non-school of choice, and scholarship tax credits?
No. It's kind of a little bit. I would say we may need more information. I don't even, you know, I mean, that's kind of a...
I'm neutral on that one. I don't, yes or no, I'm just neutral.
No.
No.
Parents should be able to choose, yes. No.
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 No. Parents should be able to choose, yes.
No. So that brings us to our closing remarks. And you've done remarkably well on time. A couple of your work kind of pushing towards the cowbell. You've done really well. And so with Becky's and Nolte's, I think we could do one-minute closing statements as opposed to 30-second closing statements. Is that... Yes. Yeah, the one-minute was rough. So we can maybe go ahead and just, well, I'll give back the microphone to Mr. ...
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, you might not know that it's hard for me to stay within a minute. I do usually go on, maybe that's why this was hard. Thank you very much for spending the time tonight here in person and virtually. I am very excited to continue supporting Forest Hills Public School. Continue in any capacity. I am very excited about the strategic planning process we had, the communication of all the great stories, and I look forward to continuing that Forest Hills be the district of choice for communities going forward. Thank you.
I just want to share that I have always loved serving the public. I do it in my job right now, business that I own, and I love kids. As you can tell in the list of activities that I've been a part of and stuff. And I love being a part of the Forest Hills community. And I want to continue to be a part of being a fighter of justice for kids. I know the last two years that we went through with COVID and stuff and a lot of things that parents were struggling with and such. I think it was a time for to rise up with our voices and basically take our community back and put it in a direction that was more of a healthy environment for everybody all the way around. It's orange paper.
You have one more.
I forgot someone else.
I want to start by thanking Dr. Molly Patterson for providing the rest of the season. Thank you for doing that. And then secondly, I want to thank the support of HPS for putting this together. This was a massive round of candidates, and we went through a lot of topics tonight. And very nicely done, and we all put together, so kudos to all of you who put in the work to get this accomplished. Again, I'm Kevin Donovan. I'm hoping that I urge your vote this evening. I'm hoping for that. I look forward to serving on the board of education for public schools and with a long-term goal of making this number one in the state of Michigan.
I agree with that sentiment. Thank you Forest Hills, HPS, for putting this on and for you for spending your time here this evening and listening to us. I just want to say, if I write your vote, you can go to votejessicajohns.com. And if you have any questions that didn't get addressed here in this forum, have to address offline. I just want to say that I actually feel honored to be a part of this group up here. And I think no matter who you choose, we've got a lot of great candidates. And I think the success of our school is amazing. I just think that no matter who you choose, we've got a lot of people here that ultimately our number one goal is that we're all passionate for our kids. We're all here to support our kids. We're all here to see that they succeed, no matter what their individual talents and abilities are. And I'm just very impressed by this group, so thank you so much.
I would say that Forest Hills is my home. My history here goes back 30 years and extends at minimum 17 years into the future with my kids in our classrooms. So it is the honor of honors to serve on the board in this capacity and to use the skills that this district and these people here have given to me to give it back to the next generation of kids. And I guess I would close with something that I think we can all agree on. If I had to define the perfect public school in 30 seconds, I would say it's a place where every child has class. And that is, they are challenged, loved, accepted, supported, and safe. Every child in every Forest Hills school. I'm committed to be an advocate for all 10,000 kids that we have in Forest Hills and the 10,000 of them, so that each of them can achieve their own individual potential and go on to be a productive member of society. That's what I want for my kids, and that's what I want for all our kids.
I also want to say thank you to support at HPS for a great event. Thank you, Dr. Patterson, and thank you, everybody, for listening. I love Forest Hills. I love serving Forest Hills, done that in numerous capacities. And I'd like to combine my business skills with my passion for education to serve Forest Hills students, families, and the community. I know how to listen to concerns, get things done, and communicate. Parents know what's best for the children and deserve to be heard. If you'd like to learn more about me, you can contact me or visit my website to learn more about my position on the issues at web, Jackie4, the number four, F H P S dot org. And I respectfully ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for everybody who is still listening into this long forum. And thank you for coming up with my no reading. I'm not a public speaker at all, but I am a finance professional, and that is what... I'm not a public speaker at all, but I am a finance professional, and that is what I bring to this board, as somebody who can look at a budget and who can help explain a budget to the community. I also have a vested interest in this district. My own children will be in Forest Hills for many years to come. And for the sake of, for them and for the sake of all of our children, I want to keep our public schools strong. I'm so excited for my kids. We have so many great programs and so many opportunities in all of our schools. They're going to have the best experience, I know that, and I want to give back by serving my community for them. I would be honored to be on the board and serve Forest Hills Public School District.
Thank you. Thank you to support at the, uh, HPS for throwing this forum. Thank you for everybody who is here in person and those watching online for having such a vested interest in education. I've dedicated my life to education because I believe it is the single greatest gift one can receive. I'm running for school board because our public education system is under attack by a vocal minority of extremists in our community. And I'm committed to being a reasonable, empathetic, inclusive, and data-driven and a voice on the school board. Please visit votejustinshelman.com to learn more about me and my platform. Thank you.
All right, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight, watching online, taking the time to engage our children's education. Hope that everyone here and online will take what they earned, engage in discussion with other parents and adults in the district. This year, we're choosing board members, the majority of the board. With this, it's more important than ever that every voter in Forest Hills is aware of who they're voting for in line. So please help me spread that message.
So I hope this forum accomplished that for each of us, you've understood better what we are, how we think about things, and what our values are. I've been trying to do that with my responses tonight. I want to emphasize something that if you know about my campaign, I have a statement, some key things is, I want to promote excellent schools, but also welcoming schools. And why? Because I'll hopefully want our kids to thrive. I also have in part of that statement, for our democracy to prosper. Some people ask me about that, and I just got to say, here's an example, a good example of this. This is democracy in action today. You got to hear from all of us, you got to hear different ideas about the same question. And that's a good thing, and that means to continue. If you want to learn more about my campaign, here in the room, we have materials over there. If you're wondering about the button, people don't remember my last name, please remember my first name is Ed, the one person who's running, and online you can find me.
Yeah, thank you also for the opportunity. Being here for over 22 years with two kids graduating from Northern, I am very concerned about the school system. Not just because of what everybody has said here, but when you look at the figures, you see how many kids have gone to homeschooling, how many kids have gone to private schools, 8% up last year. You see these things, and yet you see the attendance of Forest Hills, actually it brings more students outside of the area to keep the figures up than actually go down. I'm a meat and potatoes guy, that's what I do. I want to build this school system to be, again, to be a top five school district. That means tech, that means education, that means extracurricular. I want to make sure all kids have a great education. So if you want to learn more about me and my 10 points, go to Robert, crib's number four, with the initials for Forest Hills Public Schools dot com or my Facebook page. Thank you.
Again, for me too, thank you community members for being here, for those of you who are with us online, and to support at HPS and Dr. Patterson for making this such a delightful event, what a testament again to a community where we can have this kind of forum. In case you didn't hear me in the introduction, I have one tiny platform. I'm simply willing to help support whoever our board is next year in going into the future to create success in Forest Hills. I will tell you, I think I've worked with 15 board members, and there's not one of us, six months in, that did not make the statement, this is not what I expected. You've just heard from all these people who offer different things to the table and see things from very different perspectives. Takes a while to get to speed on that, happy to help with that transition. My other message is, we're really looking at breaking vote. I hope that what we tell all of our friends is educate yourselves, vote, and vote to make the district the best district it can be in the future. I had a teacher tell me while I was organizing the student advisory council, I have had the best start to school year yet, let's go out and vote and make it the best future yet for our kids. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much to Dr. Patterson. Thank you, candidates, for coming. We appreciate all your time here tonight, giving us the opportunity to learn more about your goals for board service. With Forest Hills Public Schools, I am so grateful for all the volunteers who helped tonight and for everyone who came. You can learn more about us at support@hps.org, and please remember to vote by November 8. Thank you.